Whereas countless scores of Minnesotans have served our country since 2001 and whereas it is just, it is the just desire of our community to be united in thanks to those who served to protect sovereign freedoms. And whereas citizens of the Twin Cities and surrounding communities have come together to organize and invent the Twin Cities Hero Parade, an event that fulfills the desire to come together and give thanks. Now therefore I, Mayor Jerry Miller, do proclaim July 28th, 2012 as Heroes' Day in the city of Winona, Minnesota. We were requested to do that, come up with a proclamation with the group up in the Twin Cities, and we wanted to make sure included the whole state, and so we are doing that. Couple things, I want to thank the Street Department and for all the work they did on Franklin Street. I drove over it today, it's a little bit smoother, so that's good. And then I want to wish a happy birthday to the 80's lady, Mimi Edelbeier, who was 80, I think, yesterday.
Oh wow.
And everybody who attended Rosie's birthday on Saturday, I think, had a good time, so.
Pretty?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Councilman Thurlie.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
White. Under petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1, reappointments to the Heritage Preservation Commission of Sean Burke, Mark Peterson, and Wes Hamilton.
Move to approve those appointments.
Moved by George, seconded by Michelle. Questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the appointments, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed.
Item 3.2 is an appointment to the Citizens Environmental Quality Committee of Holly Lenz.
Move to approve that appointment, please.
A move by Al, seconded by Michelle. Questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the appointments, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, Gary.
Item 3.3, a reappointment to the Joint Airport Zoning Board of Councilman Borzakowski.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. Questions? All in favor of the appointment, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed.
Item 3.4 is the donation of a stereo sound system, albums, and records to the Senior Center.
Okay, Malia, you want to?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. At the Friendship Center, for a number of years, it's been a little difficult to plan dances. Our hours of operation from 7:30 to 4:00 warrant that bands aren't necessarily available during that time of day to come. People like to go out in the evening more for the dances, but sometimes our clientele are not driving at night. And it was interesting, because we've been having this discussion a lot about how we take care of these dances, and I had a man come into my office one day and say, you know, if we just had some records, anyone could dance at any time. Interestingly enough, Fred and Carol Boosie contacted me and said that Fred had a disco in the, in St. Cloud area, and Fred will be able to tell you more about it. And when he left his business, he brought all of his album sound system, 45s, back to Winona, and had them in storage, and was wondering if we would be able to put them to use. Little did I know that there were 4,000 albums, and I believe 1,545s. A lot of it's disco, disco will come back. And a lot of it is rock and roll. So I would like to bring Fred and Carol up, and you can ask them anything. I know one person was asking me, what was the name of this nightclub, because this person had lived in St. Cloud, and she was really interested as to which nightclub that was, so.
Come on up.
We are happy to be able to give the city of Winona and the Senior Friendship Center a complete set of studio-quality sound equipment and a broad spectrum of music in the form of 33 rpm and 45 rpm records. These can be used by the Winona seniors to enhance their lives with music and entertainment that is of their era. I think that's important, that there is the type of music that they really wouldn't enjoy. All this stuff is stuff that they're going to really like. I'm happy to give that to the city and to the Friendship Center.
They wanted us to mention the name of the place that Fred had, which was called The Matador. It was actually a disco. It was in the 70s, of course, when disco was hot, when Saturday Night Fever was big. And Fred owned a plane at that time, he used to go back and forth to New York and pick up all these LPs, which were given to him free, just to be able to play and advertise. And so it was quite something, when Fred told me the whole story about it. And Garrison Keillor's book, I'm trying to think of the name of it, but the first book that Garrison Keillor wrote, he mentions The Matador in it, because at that time, he was very much a hippie, he had the long hair, used to come in on Fridays and take in happy hour with the free food out there. And he did have an excerpt in his book about that, but it was The Matador, and Fred has a lot of paraphernalia from there, but we're so glad that Winona can use his equipment.
Very good.
Any questions?
You know, you should give some of those young people a chance to hear some real music, too, instead of the stuff they got.
Do you have just a sampling of some of the artists that you have, that they're part of?
The artists? We covered everything from Fly Robin Fly, all the way up-
All of Donna Summer.
Donna Summers, yeah.
Yeah, all of the Saturday Night Fever, Champagne King. And we did have, at the beginning, before the actual disco, disco area came into fruition, we were playing a lot of country, a lot of rock and roll, and of course, a lot of 50s and 60s. And at the time, we were really interested in improving, the age limits were starting to decrease to the 18-year-old, so of course, we grabbed onto that in a hurry, and of course, it was beneficial for us. And it was a wonderful time. I enjoyed every minute of it.
Thank you very much for your donation.
Thank you very much, it would be greatly appreciated, and I'm sure very well-used at the Senior Center. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion, George?
I'd just like to say that Fred is one of our charter members of the East End Neighborhood Watch Group, and he still is very active, and he keeps an eye on Wall Street for us. And Stuben Street, with our other friends, so Fred's very active with that as well, too. And knowing you had that music, he maybe blares some of them out. Thanks, Fred.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would so move the attached resolution to accept the donations.
Second.
Seconded by Michelle. Questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed. Thank you very much.
Item 3.5 is the license agreement for the cafe at Levy Park.
Okay, you have that in front of you?
I would move to approve the license agreement.
Moved by George, is there a second? Seconded by Michelle. Questions?
Is there any beginning or ending time on this? Or September of 2012 for the lease, but you know when it's going to open?
Yes, Mayor, and members of council, the license agreement would start in September 2012, and it would be a two-year term with some options to renew the term of the lease.
Michelle?
Are they going to be open year-round, do you know?
You know, the members of the business-
They're here if they want to say something.
And if one of you could come and address what the hours of operation will be.
Hello, City Council. My name is Lyons Smith. Yes, we'd like to open up something called Boathouse at Levy Park. Basically, it's a bistro, which would open in spring of 2013.
Okay.
This is Ed Hoffman, Tom Fasbender.
Okay, questions, Michelle?
Is it going to be open year-round, is that-
Our intention is to have it open year-round, yeah. Especially the first year, we'll see how winter intrigues us. That's our intention.
Any other questions? George?
In regards to the license for beer and the wine license, what, is that 3-2 beer, or what does all that include?
Oh, we're interested in a beer and wine license, including strong beer. We plan on selling craft beers and produce beers, and there's not an awful lot of 3-2 options.
But with the beer and wine license, can they get strong beer with that?
Mayor and council, yes. If they have a wine license and are serving food, they're eligible to serve strong beer as well.
Okay, so that, would that then require a full liquor license?
No.
Okay.
It's a step down from full liquor.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion, which is to approve the license agreement with these gentlemen? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, Gary. Good idea, we wish you luck.
Yeah, good luck.
I know there's a lot of, I get a lot of calls from a lot of boaters that come in there. Of course, September is a little bit late, but maybe for next year, that are always looking for a-
There are a lot of boats out there.
Yeah. People are looking for a place to go, and hopefully this will work out good. Thank you.
Item 3.6 is the July Sand Moratorium Report.
Okay, Carlos.
Good evening, council members. Since the council's last update on the moratorium in May, the planning commission has made three recommendations. First of all, that staff draft a update of the city's extraction ordinance based on Winona County's recently updated extraction slash mining ordinance. The revision will help address potential issues related to future mining activities in the city here. The second recommendation was regarding a non-conformity agreement with the Bezos Quarry, planned to come before council in August. The agreement would address the quarry's future expansion and reclamation plans. The commission also recommended that an amendment be made to the Performance Section, Performance Standing section of the code regarding moisture testing, to help address concerns about air quality related to frac sand operations. Overall, the commission is on schedule with the moratorium study. They'll be talking about water quality permitting at their meeting next week with a speaker from the MPCA, and then they'll also move on to studying traffic impacts and environmental review in August.
Questions? I know Carlos and I have been communicating with the state, and they are getting more involved now, especially on the air quality, and they're going to be watching some tests that go on over in Wisconsin, hopefully learn some more about this. Al?
Could you update us on any state activities that are going on? In other words, we talked at one of our meetings about the generic EIS, and is there a city that's considering that, or is the state moving towards something like that?
I haven't heard about any additional steps towards something like that. I was at a meeting in St. Paul a couple of weeks ago, and it was brought up at that meeting, too. So it's definitely been in discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thanks, Carlos.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is to discuss the contract for CSH, CSAH 32 Batuminus Mill and Overlay. The one bid that was received was for $1,360,554. Engineer's estimate was $1,024,596. At this point, staff recommends not awarding to Dun Blacktop due to the amount of the bid, and that the resolution would not award the contract and rebid it next spring.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
I'll move. I'll second.
Okay, moved by George, seconded by Jerry. Questions, Al?
Yeah, and I see Keith is here, our Public Works Director. I've looked over the abstract, and I guess, you know, I'm just as shocked as probably most of us are when we see some of those prices, based on an engineer's estimate, especially the one for traffic control, the engineer's estimate was $10,000, and the bid came in at $169,000. And, you know, I guess, why did that come in as high as it did? What was the, what was the gold-plated traffic control that they were proposing?
The only reason that we could come up with would be the availability of contractors. So many other things going on at this time, that nobody really can fit into schedule without creating a whole new different crew and equipment and all of that. So it just, they do whatever price they go ahead of it.
So if we wanted, we'd have to pay the price, and there's no other contractors or companies around that would bid on it?
We went through the sealed bid process, and this is the only one that would bid on it. It doesn't hurt to come back next year, matter of fact.
And County 32 is in good enough shape to withstand another year of snow and sand and traffic?
The county's in, the county's in form.
Okay.
Would you be better off to bid it, like, early in the year, before things get going, instead of wait till things are going and then bid it?
Absolutely, earlier the better.
Yeah, okay.
George?
I think also, from past experience with some jobs that we've had, like, you know, they overbid here by, what, $200,000 and some thousand dollars. If we would award that bid, they can go out and get whoever to, you know, sublet it to correct, and just, and it's still money ahead, right?
That's right.
Yeah, so.
Okay, any other questions?
I hate to see it delayed for another year, though, is my comment.
All in favor of the motion, which is to not accept the bid of Dun Blacktop. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
If those opposed, Gary.
Item 4.2 is the Holiday Lights on Lake Winona. And Chad is here to do an update.
Holiday Lights.
Mayor and council, just passed me, light up Lake Winona formerly, was it former name, sorry, Holiday Lights on Lake Winona, came to you asking for permission to put holiday lights in Lake Park, specifically in the circle from Veterans Park to Franklin Street by the Rose Garden, within that circle in Lake Park. Due to the complexity of the request in May, you asked staff to go back and work with Carolyn Crawford, who is the representative from Holiday Lights on Lake Winona. Staff has done that. A major issue that we needed to resolve with Ms. Crawford was the installation of electrical service for the lights within the lake park. And again, the associated costs with installing electrical in Lake Park. On our request, Ms. Crawford provided a map and associated cost for installing electrical service in that circle area around Banshee, and that cost came in to be just short of Staff is recommending that the Holiday Lights on Lake Winona begin the process of fundraising $30,000. And we have selected $30,000 as a contingency, so the $27,000 install, the electrical service, and of course, any time you do a project like this, we'd like to have a contingency in place in case of unforeseen circumstances. And so again, we're requesting that Holiday Lights on Lake Winona raise $30,000 in cash. That would not mean any pledges that they would receive. We're again, requiring that they have that in cash. We have asked that Ms. Crawford bring this back to council in September, and so if you decide to move forward and approve this project in a tentative nature, we had asked that the Holiday Lights on Lake Winona do that fundraising of the $30,000 prior to September 10. The reason why we are suggesting that date is twofold. One is because of the tight timeframe that Excel has indicated the installation would take. Typically, after they receive payment, it can be anywhere between five and six weeks before that installation can be complete. We're suggesting September 10, so that gives Holiday Lights on Lake Winona time to set up any displays that they may have. We are also requesting that this fundraising be complete by September 10, so that the following council meeting, which is September 17, we can bring back the license agreement between the city of Winona and Holiday Lights on Lake Winona. So again, if you would approve this project in a tentative sense tonight, we would bring back the license agreement with more details about the project, including timeframes, if there's any street closures, just types of displays that will be used, et cetera. I have indicated on the request for council action, some concerns that staff has had. We are concerned with the timetable that Excel Energy has provided. We feel that it's a tight timetable for displays to be installed yet this winter. There is still some coordination that we feel needs to be resolved between the Winona Chamber, the Young Professionals Group, and the Holiday Lights on Lake Winona. That was one of the caveats that you had asked us to look into with Ms. Crawford. And I've also just put a concern that the complexity of the project warrants a delay until 2013. This is a large project, that's a large electrical install. Again, the complexity of the entire project, I believe, warrants a delay until 2013. We have outlined a motion for you, and again, basically that motion indicates that if you would like to give Holiday Lights on Lake Winona, again, that tentative approval, we would require them to provide proof they've collected the $30,000 by September 10, and then ask staff to draft a license agreement.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, George?
Yeah, as I look at the outline here that you described for them, Chad, with electrical insurance, streets, all those things, and they have responded to all of them.
That is correct.
And as I say, I find a lot of, you know, the answers appear to be all satisfactory. I mean, everything is answered.
And all the questions that we have asked Ms. Crawford, she has provided an answer to. The license agreement will further flush out the details of the actual project, but when staff reviewed the project in initial sense, yes, what we had sent to Ms. Crawford, she had-
Okay, and those answers are satisfactory?
Well, they are in total. There are a few, again, of those items that will happen to the license agreement that we need to hear out. Yes, in general, they, she's answered them satisfactorily.
So tonight, then, you're just simply asking for tentative approval to give them the go-ahead to raise, to raise the money, correct, is what we're looking for right now?
Correct.
Then you would come back and then go through the rest of the details with it, then?
Correct.
Okay, so-
If they would raise the $30,000 that we're asking them to, we would then bring a license agreement back for your approval. And as I mentioned, that would really then have the details of the project dates, road closures, insurance requirements, and then some type of map and further detail of what type of displays are actually going to be in the park.
Okay.
Any other questions? I see Ms. Crawford, so would you like to address the council, or at this time, or?
Yes, I would. I have talked with Chad many times about the Holiday Lights on Lake Winona. We have gone ahead and changed our name and have it incorporated, which we had it incorporated before, but we have redone it again, so that we would not interfere with the chamber. I was told in meetings that the chamber wants the same thing that we do, and we would like to prove it. We have a great vision, and all of this would be good publicity for Winona. You can see it driving by on the highway, it would bring people in. I do not see any drawbacks whatsoever to this. It is an enormous project, and I realize that, but it's going to be an enormous project in 2013, if we wait till then also. The first year is going to be the hardest, it always is, and we will learn many things. I have learned many things already, and no doubt that the learning will continue. As far as the chamber, I think that we are on board with them, I do not see a problem. We are also on board with the Vets Park. Everything we do must be approved by them before we can light anything. As far as the electricity, we have plans on how to raise that money, and we just need the go-ahead to do it.
So you feel confident you can raise the money by the 10th of September?
I feel very confident we can raise that money. We have supporters that are standing in the background, and we certainly hope that you will allow us to do this.
Jerry?
You said, and I've chatted with you a few times, and just now you said it's a, I think the word was massive project, or huge undertaking, and it certainly is. Lacrosse itself is the one I know that you say that we can equal, if not beat, and that takes approximately 3,000 volunteer hours a year. I've asked you before, and I just want to know the republic, where are the workers going to come from? I mean, you can't do it all yourself, obviously, so where are these volunteers going to come from?
Well, we are hoping that the service clubs will do this, will help us on. There are, there were many people that signed, and the public, you know, had said that they will help. We cannot, because we were not through the council, we could not go out and formally sign up people, but we do have many people that are interested in helping. We have had a great deal of interest through Winona State University with their athletes, many of them have to do community work. We have a few interns that are working, and there are more that want to come on board and help out. You know, I realize this is an enormous thing, and it can only take place when everybody does a little bit, and that's what we are hoping for, that everyone will take on and do a little bit, each club, each organization. The clubs that I have talked to have been supportive.
I just want to caution you here, and please don't take this the wrong way. Service clubs, until it becomes really to where you say, I need 10 people to show up Saturday, of course, they're going to be friendly and congenial, and they're going to support the concept, but when it really comes down to putting the boots on the ground and getting those people, it's going to be difficult, and those service clubs already have a finite number of volunteers, and they're already volunteering for a variety of things. So I do know, too, the groups that you talked to, and, you know, they were, they were kind, and they did not disagree with you, but please don't take that as a blank check for volunteers. I'm mostly concerned with, even if you had a check in your hand right now for $30,000, and you and the chamber were in lockstep agreement, which I certainly see that, that is not the case, but if those two things were accomplished, money in hand, everything good, I would still be incredibly concerned that all of that huge outlay has been done for something that, that I just don't see the volunteers happening. And please, anybody listening, I'm not saying that Winona doesn't volunteer, Winonas do volunteer, but this is going to be a different undertaking that requires a large number of people to volunteer. I was surprised at how many volunteers it takes, but that is, that is one of my main concerns.
But you're talking about their lights project after 17 years, and they did not start like that either. They did not start with 3,000 volunteers. They started with about 100, and they, they started in July, and they started with people saying, you're never going to get this done, and they did. They managed a showing that, that year. And it is only when you can get started, and people can see what might grow, that you're going to get more people coming aboard. can see what might grow that you're going to get more people coming aboard. And, you know, I grant you that it's very, it's very difficult. People say, "I want to help," and you'll say, "What would you like to do?" And they'll say, "Oh, I don't know. I don't know that I can do anything." But that is going to be our problem to face, and if we have the money raised and the forms and everything on hand, I guarantee you, we will find the volunteers. They may not be from your service clubs that you're talking about, but there are other service clubs, and they are very anxious to earn some of the money from the gates, because that's the way they pay them in La Crosse. They can earn money for their organizations by coming out and helping, depending on how many volunteers are sent out and how many hours they work. So, you know, some of your service clubs sit with okay funds, but there are many that want to earn that money, and it doesn't have to all be the adults. There are a lot of Winona State people, there are St. Mary's people that have to do community service.
That's one of the things that we're going to have to face as we go on. Michelle, you had a question?
I don't think anyone up here thinks lighting up the lake is a bad idea. I think if we agree to this right now, we're setting you up to fail, primarily because of the short timeframe. You're right, any year you do this, you're looking at a huge undertaking, but if you start now for next year, you're actually looking at something that's conceivable, at least possible. But, I mean, that's just one of my concerns. I mean, you're talking about $30,000 to install the availability to hang lights. You're not even talking about lights or structures or whatever it is you're thinking of putting up. And I don't, my problem is there's not a plan for crowd control and volunteers and the barricades, and you're talking every night from five to nine, having people outside in the cold volunteering, and as someone who tries to find volunteers in the summer, I mean, it is a struggle for events that we try to find volunteers for. So I have a concern because I don't feel like what you've given us is complete. It's hard for me to make a decision when what I'm looking at doesn't feel like a complete plan, and I know you're just in the stages, but I'm not sure how big your committee is, and what happens if you collect funding but you don't get enough, and so then the project can't happen? Are people getting their money back? You say you're going to work with the Chamber. I've spoken with some of the young professionals, and I don't, I don't see that relationship the way you do. I don't see that connection you seem to think you've made, and I'm not sure about the Vets Park. I believe you've spoken to people there, but they, I guess I'd like to see something from their committee saying, "Yes, we're on board with the project," and I guess those are my concerns. Like I said, I think, I think lighting up the lake is fantastic, but I wish it was, I wish you had more time or you could work with the Chamber, who already has an established group that wants to do this. I just think if we approve this right now, we're setting you up to fail, which is I don't think, I just don't think is the right thing to do. I think you just, in just working with Excel, I just don't think there's the time. What if there's an early freeze? Trying to get them to install one gas meter on a house is a challenge. This is a huge project, so I'm just wondering what your thoughts and plans are there.
Could I ask one question of Chad? What would have to be done to give her the okay to start raising money with some contingencies that we have to see, like Michelle was saying, something where there's an agreement between all the other folks that are working on this? Is there some way that we can give her the okay to go out and try to raise money without saying, you know, before we see a plan and before we see any of that?
Mayor and Council, again, I would just ask Chris to nod, I guess. My reaction to that would be is what you're doing tonight is giving her tentative approval to go out and fundraise. If she collects the money, and there's the, that's the contingency, if she collects the money, the license agreement will come back. She doesn't have, tonight you're not giving her approval to put any display in Lake Park. Really, the motion tonight is to give her the approval to go out and fundraise for this project. Again, I understand what you're saying. There are some questions about the details of the project. You're giving her the ability to fundraise, but ultimately, then, September, when the license agreement comes back to you, that's when you have the ability to allow this to continue this winter, or have staff go back and draft further contingencies in the license agreement.
My question, do you, do you understand that there are some concerns about that maybe the relationship between the Chamber and the young, whatever they are, the young people?
Professionals.
The young professionals and all that will have to be put together before, I'll let Della speak, but let, you know, before, before I think there's willingness on the council to, I think they would, I think they'd want to give you the right to go out and raise the money, but without giving approval to the concept or the whole concept until we see everything is put together? Is that, I don't know. Jerry's shaking his head over there.
Well, after Michelle, I guess.
I just want to ask Chad, so what we're essentially saying, then, is go ahead and try to raise the 30,000, put in the effort, but if you don't do by this date, then it's kaput. So again, I feel like we're setting her up to fail because that is a huge amount of money to raise from now until September 10th, is kind of my point, and I know you said that because of the timeframe for Excel to get in. One, I mean, so it's come back to council, we have to go over and do the license agreement before we can even give permission. So I guess I just have concerns about even that part of it because of, she doesn't really have time. I mean, I just, I've been part of fundraising projects. It's extremely difficult, even when you have a formal plan in place, like when people have come with, like the Purple Hearts, when they came in with their very formal presentation, they hadn't even started fundraising yet, and I just, it's very difficult. So I'm just wondering what happens to her, then?
I did not, Mayor and Council, I did not put the caveat in this council action item if she does not raise the 30,000, because ultimately, I think you have to decide tonight if you want to give her tentative approval to go ahead and fundraise. If you do, I think your motion should include something that states that if she does not, again, it would be up to your decision, do you want to extend that for one year? Do you want her to come back? Do you want us, staff, to come back in September with a license agreement for 2013 opposed to 12? I think, again, if you're thinking of giving her tentative approval tonight, that should be something that is added to the motion.
Jerry. I personally think that Ms. Crawford is going to raise the $30,000, and I think she'll do it in the timeframe. I mean, as hard as you've worked and much networking as you've done, so my vote tonight is not going to be on maybe. My vote tonight is going to be, and I think that's what we all should be doing tonight, is if you like the project and think that it's got legs and it's going to be able to get all the volunteers and can work through the issues with the Chamber, that's what you vote on, because I don't want to send a message, "Go out and try to raise the money, but I don't really want to vote for it anyway." That's the wrong message. It's not fair. I think we have to vote on it, and then, but she doesn't have complete approval, and then if she gets the money and works out those problems, okay, then it comes to the license agreement. But if you're for it or against it, that should be the vote tonight. Just, in my mind, I'm going to vote as if she's got a check for $30,000 up there at the podium. I think that's the fairest way to do it.
Right, but, you know, my, I'm going to vote on whether, not only you got the money, but do you have the cooperation of other people that are down there, too?
Absolutely, but I don't want it to hinge on, well, you know, she's nice, she's not going to get the money. I think she's going to get the money.
But I think the people out there that you're getting the money should know that, that if it doesn't come together, working with these other groups, that it's not going to happen. And I don't know how you, how you do that. When you get down, why don't Della speak?
We will make that clear to them.
Okay.
We will make that clear to them.
Okay, any other questions of Ms. Crawford?
Yeah, I support the project. I agree, I feel, yes, she will get to $30,000. All projects start out small, and, you know, from a, from a young business person starting out, you got this idea, you go to the bank, you say, "I want to do whatever it may be," and the bank says, "No, no, we can't help you." You know, there's nothing there. You know, you kind of kill the dream right away. From what La Crosse said, yes, it's big, it's massive, and you're right, you know, they did not start that way. I am in support of the project. I am in support of everyone working together on it. I think it'd be very beautiful for our lake park in, you know, during the wintertime. And, you know, a lot of times, people bring things to us, like we had the person that wanted to paint it, you know, paint the levee wall that time. You know, well, we did a lot of things, and no, he didn't paint the levee wall, which probably would have been beautiful, you know, so many years ago. But I support the project, I'm confident you can get to $30,000, and as things come together from there. If it doesn't happen this year, is there a problem with putting something together next year? Let's see if it doesn't happen.
No, we would go forward from that point, but we do intend, we do hope to fundraise. And, you know, when La Crosse started, they had support from the city, they had support from the Chamber. They did not have to go through all of these things. The city had leased them the land at no charge whatsoever. They were encouraging them to do this, and I would hope that Winona would do this also.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you. Della, you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of the council. With me here this evening is also the chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, Young Professionals. Boy, it's really with kind of disappointment, fear, and trepidation that I stand here in front of you, because of course, Jerry, to your, to your point, who wouldn't be supportive of the concept of the project? Having said that, I'd like to make three brief points for your consideration. And the first one, if you'll just allow me, may not seem relevant at first blush, but it will in just a moment. The Chamber of Commerce initiated the Young Professional Division for a very specific reason, because we had been talking to major employers in this community and asking them what were the strengths and weaknesses of doing business in this community. And what we heard loud and clear was attracting and retaining the best young talent was one of their greatest challenges. And so from that, we acted by creating the Young Professionals. We started with six individuals. Today, we have over 100 and still growing, ages 21 to 39, who say, "I'm a Chamber of Commerce Young Professional participant." And it's from that group and that energy and that young leaders and entrepreneurs, some are business owners, some are in their first management jobs, various areas of their career development, that the idea for Light Up Winona emerged. And that group of young professionals worked their heart out last year to begin a lighting project for Winona, and I would ask that that be respected, because I don't want to see them demoralized by the work that they've already done. And frankly, that's already begun to happen, and I find that to be very discouraging. So I wanted to tell you why we formed YP, and this is just one example of something positive that has come out of this great energetic group. Secondly, I'm very concerned about this fundraising aspect, because the Chamber Young Professionals have already started their fundraising efforts. I have copies for you of the letters that we have already sent out, that is a follow-up to funders from last year, as well as an effort to attract additional contributors. And the response that we're getting to our letter is confusion and hesitation because of this other project and not knowing why the two can't be brought together. So that brings me to my third point, which is the one that I'm actually the most disappointed about, and that is that there has not been communication or coordination or any effort for communication or coordination by this other initiative to collaborate with the Chamber, who already has an existing project in place and the passion and the energy to grow it, not to mention the Chamber of Commerce is an established organization with a track record. And all of our funds raised went directly to the City of Winona, not to some other fund. So we really, and we met one time with Carolyn, we would like to see this put into 2013 because of many of the reasons that you brought up. We'd like to allow our fundraising on our project that's already started to move forward in a way that doesn't cause additional confusion. So let us get our project done, if we can, to our Phase Two. We'd like to see more clear and closer communication between the organizations. One example, we had asked an offer to help this other initiative, and in part of that, asked for a copy of, well, who is part of this initiative? Do you have a committee? Do you have a board? Can we meet with them? Can we come alongside you to talk about how we could grow together in a win-win collaborative way, 2013 and beyond? We have not received any information, no phone call, no follow-up meetings, and didn't even know that Carolyn was coming back again to you folks this evening until I got a copy of the council agenda. So there hasn't been communication that's being alluded to, but I think there can be, and I think there should be, and I would just ask that you take that into consideration. I just want to see our Chamber Young Professionals be able to move forward with a project that they've put their heart into and not see it undermined by another well-intentioned project, but one that quite frankly is about to derail the project that these young people have worked very hard on. Thank you for letting me speak, and if you like, I have copies of the letter.
Okay, anyone have any questions for Della? Okay, thank you. All right. So what we're doing tonight is what? What are we doing tonight here?
Again, Mayor and Council, what, the motion that we have laid out is for you to direct staff to draft a license agreement, subject to Holiday Lights on Lake Winona providing proof they've collected $30,000 or more, not including pledges, by September 10th. The council would be giving tentative approval of the project, again, subject to the Holiday Lights on Lake Winona entering into a license agreement, which we brought back to council on September 17th of this year, if that funding contingency is met. The only thing that we would, I would recommend you add is if you want some kind of caveat or some additional motion, that if you are going to give her tentative approval, what you want to do if she does not raise that, if you want to extend into the next year, et cetera.
Okay, questions?
I'm kind of reluctant to vote on really any direction at this point, because there seems to be a lot of opportunities to work together better between now and perhaps our next council meeting, maybe to have staff continue to work with the two groups involved to find out a way that would be able to blend those goals together and look toward a project perhaps in 2013 that would be a benefit, I think, in a greater way to the city, because we wouldn't have two very well-intentioned groups working for the same goal and in different directions when they really should be working together. So I'm not really ready to vote on any motion right now at this point.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor of the motion?
I have no motion.
Oh, there is no motion. All right.
That's what I just said. I'm not making a motion there.
I, too, you know, you got... Ms. Crawford, you're here, Della, you're here. Is there a way that you two can get together?
Well, I wanted to say, when I came out of the meeting with Della, Chad, Carlos, I was told that the Young Professionals, I had talked with them earlier, and I was told that they would indeed go their own direction and that we are working, according to Della, what Della said at the meeting was that we are, we want the same thing. We want to light up the Winona area, and, but I was also told that we would keep our own identities, and I was not told that I was to communicate any more than what was needed for the... I was not told that I was to communicate any more than what was needed for this release to the paper. Now, if they wanted me meeting with them, it would have only taken a phone call. And, do you know, the phone works both ways. So, I mean, when I am out in the dark, and like I said, I'm learning, I'm learning a lot. But when I am out in the dark and don't know that they're expecting me to call them when I haven't been told to, I see, you know, that's why things didn't proceed that way. So I am trying to do all of the things that were asked from me from the city. I thought the advertisement in the paper that was written by Della, and it was signed by me also, was confirmation that we were working this thing out. And they have come out already with their fundraising. It is out to the community. You know, we are starting later. I think people would have decided what they're going to be doing. Not many people even know about us at this point. So I don't know that how we could be holding them up at any certain level. I'm just confused on this.
Okay, Jerry.
Out of curiosity, are you looking at having two projects?
Yeah, that's what I'm kind of confused about.
That's kind of what I think I just heard you say here, that you're going to let the chamber do theirs, but you're going to have yours.
That's what I was told from the beginning.
Well, that's never going to happen.
No.
And why is that?
Well, I don't know. I suggest that all the groups ought to get together. And if you're going to, you know, I'm sure if somebody's going to come and ask me for money, well, I want to know what all is going on down there. And I don't want to get asked by two, three different people.
We never had any intention of lighting anything other than the lake area. And the reason we wanted to light the lake area is because we want to be able to come back with food for the food shelf and for contributions for charities. And their project is not doing this sort of thing. And there's nothing against them, but this was one of the main things of why we wanted to start this. That it is also something that, not only will it be something beautiful, it's something giving back to Winona. And, you know, I'm sorry, I did not know about this conflict till tonight, when she got up to spoke, speak. So, I mean, I am confused on it also. But they are looking at going from the lake lodge down to, on Main Street, down to the river. And we have no intention of doing anything other than the lake area that is circled around so that people can make those charitable donations.
Okay. Well, I, I don't know. I'm confused. I guess, were you going to make a motion, George, or just?
Well, like I said, it, everything tonight here gets, you know, more things coming. And I support the project.
You know, maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea to give it two weeks and see if Chad can pull these people together and see if you can work something out.
Well, good luck on that, Chad.
So I would, I would like to know, now, if you're sending us out to fundraise, are we fundraising for the Young Professionals?
We're not sending you out to fundraise.
Well, at some point, if it's ever going to get out, it's got to go, you know?
Well, if you're looking for, I'll make a, if you want a motion, I'll make a motion. You don't want my motion, because my motion is going to be deny your request. I'd rather, I'd feel much more comfortable working with the chamber and that you have your vision meld with what the chamber has. And then it's behind the chamber's already established machine, so to speak. And that would work out a lot better. Now, you're looking at a slightly different deal, but I don't think you're going to get approval to have two similar projects. And then neither one of you are going to get you to fundraising. It's going to be confusing. So if...
So you're, you're asking that we go out and work underneath the chamber even though we aren't Young Professionals?
What I'm asking you to do, I think what we're all asking you to do, is to see if you can work with the chamber to reach and to modify your goal, your mission slightly. If that can't be done, we're only going to be backing one project. In my personal opinion, I would back a project. I'm not going to go against the chamber. I'm going to back a chamber project. So hopefully, you can work with that. You keep saying it's for Winona, and you're 100% right. That's what the chamber wants to do. So I think you can work together. But if you want that piece of real estate, and they're going to have a different one, well, if it can't be a compromise, there's only going to be one project. I'm only speaking for myself. I, but I just don't see two projects going.
I am confused on this. Because when you go into any city, you don't just see one little area lit up. You know, you see many areas.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Well, I would move to approve the tentative agreement that Chad talked about here this evening.
Okay. There's a motion by George. Is there a second? Okay. Motion fails for lack of a second. And I would suggest that you all get together and see if you can work something out. Okay. National Honor Society?
The next item, 4.3, the National Honor Society Project, has been pulled from the agenda at the request of the school district. We go to new business, item 5.1, the Small Cities Development Program, Winona Core Neighborhood Rehabilitation Program Grant Agreement.
Okay. Lucy?
Yes, Mayor and members of council, this is a grant that the city was awarded, and it's to continue our core rehabilitation for low and moderate income homeowners in the city of Winona. So we received $600,000. And by your action tonight, we'll assign that agreement to take this project forward.
Okay. Lucy, you did a good job.
I've got a question for Lucy. How many years is this now?
This begins now, and it goes through December.
No, but how many years now have we been successful in the grant with Deed?
Twenty years.
That's good.
I can say from experience that this year was the most competitive. And to get a project that continuously repeats, that means not only, well, all communities are worthy, but that means that you have one of the best grant-writing teams that you could possibly get. This year, only 60% of the grants that went in were approved. So what I'm trying to say is excellent job.
Mayor and council, it's not just an excellent job writing the grant. I think where we really shine is our, is our ability to operate the program and be very successful at it.
Well, you're right. And I meant the whole thing. But it was, you can't just write a grant. They already know who you are. And they got to see, did you do it right in the past? And it's your past.
And we've proven that we can do it right. Yes.
Okay. Or is there a motion? There is not a motion yet. Jerry?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Is she all second? Questions?
It's just a comment. I mean, you know, as Lucy said, this has been an ongoing program for years and years. And it says to me, and I think to everybody that realizes it, that, you know, we still have these needs in our community. And what this is, is basically a drop in the bucket to meet those needs. But thank goodness, there is those sources to create these positive, positive steps in our community.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the Small Cities Development Program? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it was opposed.
Item 5.2 is the 2011 Sidewalk Project Certification of Completion and Final Estimate.
I would move to approve the attached resolution for the sidewalk completion.
Move by George, second by Al. Questions or comments? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the 2011 Sidewalk Project Certification of Completion and Final Estimate? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it was opposed.
Item 5.3 is the part-time firefighters' hourly wages. These are consistent with pay raises for the full-time firefighters.
Move to approve the wage increases.
Move by George.
Second.
Second by Jerry. Questions? All in favor of the motion, which is to approve the part-time firefighters. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It was opposed.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
All with George tonight.
Okay. Highway 43 improvements are well underway with the turn lanes and the bypass lanes. So as you go up Highway 43, and you're meeting the people coming down from County Road 12, avoiding the roundabout, let's all be patient with one another. And the projects, when they're done, are going to be great. So there's no problem. There are a little confusion, little delays, but everything will be fine. So they're going to be good. I'd like to wish happy birthday to my granddaughter tomorrow, who enters her teen years. She is 13. And she shares her birthday with a couple other youngsters, EastEnders, Theodore Shima, who will be 96 tomorrow, and Bernice Sukamol, who will be 101. So she shares with those great people. And also, birthday greetings to a youngster, Ray Greenwood. He's going to be 93.
Must be the water in the east there, right?
I would say.
The water at Rosie's.
I have no concerns, although I just want to say whoever worked on that state water trails, that was fantastic. I've never been in canoe, didn't manage to capsize it, so I'm pretty proud of myself. It was fantastic.
Hi, Jerry.
I never try to mention people's birthdays, because you can never beat the East End show that George has been putting on for a long time. But I do want to wish my youngest daughter, Allison, a happy 27th birthday today. That makes you feel old when you say that's your youngest daughter.
Yeah. Well, it must be birthday today because I want to wish my granddaughter, Olivia, a belated ninth birthday. She was that, we celebrated that on Saturday, the 14th. And I also want to give thanks for the Winona Municipal Band's efforts the last few weeks in their concerts with The Heat. They played a heck of a July 4th concert in The Heat. The Minnesota Orchestra gave up, but our own municipal band played on on the 4th of July for our community. So thanks to them, Director Meyer and Hug, for their fine efforts as they continue this summer.
Good. I just want to pick up on Michelle, that Waterweeze, that was the first in the state, and they picked Winona. And Mike Chikonowski deserves a lot of credit for that, as well as the city. Maynard and his crew did a heck of a job down there. They had a little problem in the morning, but it was all taken care of. And I think St. Mary's Fish and Wildlife were involved in that. And it is a neat event. And when we can be first, that's, that's a big feather in our hats.
And they had fish there. Fish.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of frightening, actually.
All right.
Under the consent agenda, there is one item, the approval of the minutes for July 2nd.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Move by Al, second by Michelle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it was opposed.
Mr. Mayor, I move. Your turn.
Move by Jerry, second by George. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It was opposed. Okay. Thank you.